Yes, good evening. My name is Wendy Berger. I'm here for the former Cole Schatz representing the applicant. Last month, we were, not last month, I'm sorry, February, we were on the board, and at that meeting, we presented several witnesses. We presented the architect, we presented the traffic expert at that time. Today, I have our project engineer and our planner, and we also have a few responses to some questions the board and others had that we still need to provide answers, so we have that as well.
Let me just put on the record that I read the transcript that was provided in full, and I don't know if anyone else did not hear the actual application and had to read the transcripts, but okay. All right, so I just wanted to add on the record for the first person here. Everybody heard the application, didn't you?
I just wanted to state again for the record, I mentioned it at the last meeting, but obviously a lot, many more people here tonight. Wendy Berger and I have business dealings together, you know, on zoning matters for work with my employer, it's not with me personally. I don't think it would affect my-
Let me read the statement you said last time. "Mr. Chairman, I just want to put on the record that this burger and I have all these have had, and you know, many zoning applications and planning together for my employment. We actually have some ongoing applications. You have to be a partner law firm of a tenant of mine and a tenant of my employer. So if anyone is opposed to hearing, to me hearing, or my hearing the application, I certainly, you know, entertain the issue, but I don't think the relationship I have has any, will have any impact on my ability to consider this application in part."
I said it much better the first time.
Without the accent the first time. And, so that still stands, Mr. -
But, but there's a new crowd, so-
Yeah, we have checks, we have checks. Whoa, 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 whoa. You can object all you want from telling them about the other help. If you have something to say, we do this in a very orderly fashion. If you have something to say, please come up, stand in line wherever has something to say, and then you can ask any questions or have any comments to this issue. Okay? Would you like to say something, sir? So please, don't say anything now. Come up, stand in line, I will be happy to hear you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
What is your name?
Dr. Roland Raggio.
I'm sorry, you've got to speak louder and then slower, so the court reporter, who is the most important, as I told you personally in the room, would like to be able to hear what you have to say.
Dr. Roland Raggio.
Uh, I would-
One second.
Roland Raggio?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you spell? Good evening.
Dr. Raggio, thank you.
How are you?
Well, good. Okay, if we would, let's raise our right hands, because you're going to offer us the, I see you're going to say something, or in the constant testimony. Do you solemnly swear or affirm, Dr. Raggio, that in the testimony you offer this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and all you got?
Wonderful, you just talked real loud.
I object. If, if there's a business relationship involved between two parties-
Sorry, who's the other party?
What's his name, the councilman, sir?
Mr. Barda.
Mr. Barda.
Yes.
If-
Who's the other party?
The people who will go to the-
No, that's not what he said. He said he has a business relationship with the attorney.
Okay, fine, so if he has-
The attorney represents a party, he is not the other party.
So listen, if there is a relationship between the attorney and Mr. Barda, any kind of business relationship, I think it would be fair if he recuses himself so that the people who are going to make decisions are all impartial, where there's no conflict of interest. Is that clear?
Let's, let's, are we going to clap on that clap? I don't think this is the forum for that. Okay, let's, let's not clap, let's try to spend our time understanding what the parties and the people would like to say, so we don't waste our time with provisions and other things that have no impact on our decision here tonight, or any other night. So let's, let's try to restrain ourselves and be a very productive evening.
Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me.
Excuse me.
No, excuse me. See, I control the meeting here tonight, that's why I'm the chair. So I'll give you all the courtesy, but please don't interrupt me, okay? You're not controlling the meeting, I am controlling the meeting. Do we have that clear?
All right. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Please, you have to be respectful, like the same way I'm respectful to you. Okay, let's do that. So, what would you like to say?
The first thing I'd like to say, Mr. Mayor, is that your presentation is not only rude and narcissistic, you also need to have respect for the residents of this town and how you address people. Yes, you may be the chair, but being the chair comes with the responsibility for you to treat people with a greater deal of respect than what you're showing this evening.
Thank you. Good. Would you like to talk to the mad-eyed man?
I already did.
Okay, good.
Very good, Doctor.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak to the decision? Please do.
Good evening, sir.
And what is your name?
Your name?
James Beach, a resident, can I-
Can you spell your last name?
B is in Victor, E A C H. I tried to bring all my materials.
You raised your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm any testimony you offer this evening to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and all you got?
I do.
Very good, sir, nice to see you.
Yeah, we did this. I intended to bring, but I forgot to bring, the name of today's bourbon record, which has an article about a Supreme Court decision which reversed a planning board decision based on conflicts of interest. Do you know what I'm talking about, that decision?
I am.
I don't think that we need a close call here on conflicts of interest. I think this gentleman should recuse himself. You have plenty of alternates. This is a highly contested case. There's no reason why he should pay law. He should recuse himself. Thank you.
Are you an attorney?
I am an attorney.
Are you an attorney?
No.
So you're here for yourself?
I'm here as a resident of T-N-A.
No, not a problem. Now, you know, the issue of impartiality is- I'm not even going to tell you. Thank you.
You are.
Thank you for the answers. Anyone else would like to speak to any issues relating to Mr. Barda's? I'm sorry, yes? Good evening, ma'am.
My name is Ollie Elver. I am a resident of T-N-A.
Can you spell your last name for the record? Would you like to raise your right hand to house of this way?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that anything that you say and not be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and all you got? Thank you.
What would you like to say?
I just want to speak to the issue of the-
Mr. Barda.
Mr. Barda, recusing himself, and when he very-
Well, he didn't say he was recusing himself.
No, on the issue of whether he should not recuse himself.
Yes.
And I'm going to be very short and to the point, and I'll say this. If not in the letter of the law, in the spirit of the law.
Thank you very much. Does the fool would like to say something? Back the fool?
My name is Henry Pruitt, and I live at 113 Ford Street, and I'm not here as a councilperson. That's my other job, I'm just here as a citizen, please. I want you to, my question is, looking at 100 states-
Well, one second. Let's maybe have you sworn in, because it seems like there's also-
Okay, good. Doctor, good evening. Do you solemnly swear or affirm any testimony you offer this evening to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and all you got? Very good to see you, sir.
What would you like to say?
Okay. It seems to me as builders come to this town to make as much money as they can.
I'm sorry, Wendy, one second. You're talking about only to the issue-
I'm talking about 100 states.
No, no, we're talking about only to the issue of the conflict, potential conflict.
Oh, I'll come back in half.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
Can I ask a few questions, Miss Berger? It's okay.
Well, one second, let's, let's see if anyone else wants to-
You're right, go ahead.
Anyone else like to speak to the issue as to the conflict?
Hi. Good evening.
How are you?
I'm good. Before I say anything, I just wanted-
Put your name on the-
Sure. My name is Doctor Tanya, T-A-N-Y-A, Pagan, P-A-G-A-N, Raggio, R-A-G-G-I-O hyphen Ashley, A-S-H-L-E-Y. You're good? Wonderful. Thank you.
How are you?
Before I speak, I just wanted, before I say anything, am I allowed to come up more than once, or just once?
To this issue, we're doing enough. And then there'll be something later, if some people want to speak to us. So let's just swear you in first.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm any testimony you give us to be the truth?
I give.
Wonderful.
Go ahead.
All right, good evening, sir. I believe you pose a conflict of interest, and Chair, I believe you pose a conflict of interest because you have a business affiliation, association with the attorney. This is a very important matter for us. Okay, I don't know how many of you live in the northeast corridor, but this is important, and the last, the last thing we need, and I'm so sorry, she just made a face and you didn't respond, Chair, and earlier it was an-
Excuse me. First of all, I did take care of that face, but-
I didn't hear you say it.
Excuse me, is this about what I have to say, or how I-
I'm trying to speak, and the attorney standing next to me making a face.
The most important is what comes on the record, that's all we care about. You can dance up and down, it doesn't affect us.
Fine. So, sir, I, I just believe that you have a conflict of interest. I live at 33 West Tryon Avenue, up the hill from where they're planning to build this building. I've never adapted to any other buildings that have gone up into now.
No, 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 Miss Berger, please, just let her finish it. Whatever she wants to say.
Thank you very much.
You didn't want, did you say anything?
No, I'm fine, Chair, I think I've expressed what I want to.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else would like to say anything?
Yes.
Okay, yes, ma'am. If anyone else, please come up and say it, so we don't waste our time, you know, waiting for people to speak to that issue for your record.
Good afternoon. My name is Wanda Brown, B-R-O-W-N. I'm speaking as a resident of, of T-N-A.
One, one second. There you go.
Ms. Brown, good evening. Do you solemnly swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful to see you.
What would you like to say? As to the issue of-
Yes. I know the issue we're talking about, and I firmly do believe that there will be, or possibly, a conflict of interest. When one has a business affiliation, agreement, association, whatever word you want to use, with someone else from the other side, the possibility is just too possible to happen. So I think Mr. Jerry Barda should recuse himself from this. Thank you very much.
Okay. Is that one of your witnesses, Miss Berger? Who's this?
The attorney in my office.
Okay, good. Please, come on.
I'm so sorry.
Let's take your name for the record.
Yes, good evening. My name is Gordon Brown. And I live at 54 Ayers Court, on 3A Teaneck, New Jersey.
Mr. Brown, do you solemnly swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening to be the truth, the whole truth?
Yes, I do.
Wonderful to see you, sir.
And that said, I'm so sensitive to this whole matter that I'm not sure if I should recuse myself.
But we're talking about this, I mean.
Yes, simply because I'm for everything that's good for T-N-A, so I'm partial. Okay, I'm partial to the issues of T-N-A. And the fact that, Mr. Barda, and I'm respectfully, Mr. Barda, I feel that the simple fact that you had some notion or some concern that you may need to recuse yourself is enough for you to do so. Thank you.
So this is a matter of, this is a matter of information. It's a very practical, very common procedure for all of us. Anytime there's any tangential, any kind of connection to an attorney or an applicant to disclose in public, this is what we do all the time. It's not a matter of Mr. Barda feeling that he's sensitive to this, it's just a matter of, we all do this all the time, and that's what we're doing here. So it's, there's nothing unusual about this, just so you know.
Okay, I appreciate that, and again, I was talking about the consciousness.
And I get, we're, we're all residents of T-N-A as well, and we all have, we all have connections and business dealings and knowledge of people actually all the time. And it's incumbent upon us, as a matter of legal procedure and practicality, to disclose in public when any possible connection or relationship exists. So nothing unusual about what Mr. Barda did, just stay noted.
Okay, and I appreciate that, and I'm getting the feeling that you want to take away-
No, no, I-
Or diminish.
I'm not at all, sorry, because most, most, I would say that 95% of you have, don't come to these meetings, and aren't aware of that. And we're here all the time, and we do this all the time. So when any applicant comes in here, it could be my neighbor, my friend, it could be somebody I go to get a haircut with. If I have any relationship, it's incumbent upon all of us to disclose it to the public.
And the real test, so everybody knows, is if you feel that you could not be impartial, then, like you saw before, there was a lady, I didn't know that was her property, it wasn't a corporate name, and I realize now who the applicant in truth was at the time, so I said to myself, you know, I don't think I can be impartial in that case, and I recused myself right away and said, listen, this is not for me to sit on that application. And that's really the test is. The test is not so much, do you know a person or so, do you feel that you can be impartial and, and be fair and make the right decisions, even though you know a person, or you see them in the shopping center, or whatever it is? And that's really the test. Okay? So you saw what I did before, when I had, I felt, no, I could not be impartial because I know this person. I would feel bad if they got approval or not approval. So I said, you know what, much easier, I step down, somebody else make those decisions who don't have that relationship where I felt. And it's really a very, there's a subjective and objective standard. And the subjective standard is, if I feel that I can't be impartial, I can't be impartial on a matter, I should step down, and that's what I did. So you see how it also works in practice?
Yes, yes. And I appreciate you doing that. And if I can get a little more specific and detailed, the issue of ongoing relationship that Mr. Barda has with Wendy Almashow.
I, I don't, I don't think we need that. The question is really, yeah, the question is really, whether Mr. Barda feels that he can be impartial on that, or if there's an inherent conflict of interest, interest. I'm not sure there is an inherent conflict of interest between Mr. Barda and their attorney, or their old professionals who work in, whatever. But, um, the question, I think, in this case, the way I see it is, and I'm sure counsel can, can back you up on the legalities, our counsel has to give us the advantage, the question is, if Mr. Barda can be impartial in making decisions or voting on this case, that's really the litmus test in this matter. But I don't know if Mr. Barda has anything to say that he wants to stay or recuse himself in this matter.
I am absolutely certain I can be impartial on this, but in deference-
I don't think we need a lot of people laughing, that's not that funny.
Yeah.
You know, we sit here, month after month, after month, and do this as a service to the town. So I don't think it's funny that, you know, Mr. Barda should be laughed at when we are volunteers doing this job as diligent, as meticulous as we can. So, please, Mr. Barda.
What I was going to say was, I have absolutely no concerns about my ability to be impartial, but in deference to the, to the community, there's obviously, you know, concern on their behalf. I, I serve at the will of the community, and I am, I am prepared to recuse myself from the application, out of respect for the, for the community that's here, and, but I just want to clear that there is no conflict of interest, in my opinion, but I'm, again, in deference to the community, I am prepared to step down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Barda, thank you very much. We appreciate that you give a deference to people's opinion, and I don't see the interest in the conflict, but that's not my issue. That's all to you, and you have asked-
I would not, I would not want there to be any possibility of tamping the proceeding, and so-
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Laura. Anyone else who has anything to do about this conflict, I guess, the matter is moot, and please, never see.
Let's, let's do this one, one more time. Anyone who has, I'm sorry.
Ladies and gentlemen, please. Excuse me.
Ma'am, this is fine? I'm sorry, are we, can we help you get yourself situated in some way?
Yeah, apologize.
No, it's okay, take your time.
Thank you.
Please turn off your phones. It's very annoying to people trying to testify when they keep hearing like pings behind their head. It's actually a little bit unnerving when you're on that side. Please, this is not a pep rally, there is no clapping, there is no talking, there is no joining together over something. A concern was just expressed, you saw a board member take an extraordinary action of simply trying to do the right thing by way of the public. Absolutely lovely and gracious. So, we would like everyone, unless we just want to be here for a very long time, month after week after month after month, to be able to get their application concluded, and then, as you've seen, the chairman lets everybody be heard for, for the smallest things or the largest things. So please, all cell phones off, no speaking, okay? And certainly no clapping or cheering. This is, it's not a revival meeting, okay? This is a, this is a winged meeting. It's not a clapping event for the people. This is-
Listen, listen, listen. We can do this in an easy way and get this application testimony in, or we can just do it, you know, over months, as counsel said.
You know, let's try to get it.
I'm not, I'm not hearing anyone else.
Okay? All right, let's try to get to the matter at hand. Is there any way that this room could be made cooler? Is that at all possible?
Let it open it a little bit.
No idea. If the fans go on, if something happens, whatever we can do.
Just not the back fan, because that makes a lot of noise.
We're not here in public, okay? All right? And we also have a good and welfare, just a little. Okay? Mr. Chairman?
Yes. One second, let's just get these things right. Mr. Melty?
Yes.
Yes, see you. One second. One second. I can't hear. I mean, I think we'll go to town, but I was- And then we have good luck, ours. Sorry. Good?
You need to sit in that chair over there. Except today.
All right. We'll continue, we may as well off the, I guess.
If we could proceed, my next witness-
Let's, let's give that a minute and see if it levels out. Is there any council members here, since this day? That's two for two. Oh, come on, shut up. Shut that one.
Shut them off, let's move forward. Okay, we'll keep trying.
Seventy dollars.
So-
Okay, we're good?
So, as the board may recall, at last month's meeting, we had the testimony of the architect, and we had the testimony of the traffic engineer with regards to the project. We also had some testimony in response to that testimony from the board's witnesses as well. The board had its engineer from Stonefield here, and he testified, and you had your, from your planner testified. Not full testimony, but that was in response testimony to the testimony that was given before. So I now want to proceed with the engineer, and some of the engineer's testimony is also a response to comments and questions the board had as well, as well as his presenting of the plans. And we did not have that testimony yet.
Let me, I just want a summary of a few things.
Yes.
Okay? And let's look at the testimony. So far, we are at 68 units, correct?
Correct.
And 10 of them is what is designated as co-units or low-income-
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing is the word we used.
Correct.
So 10 out of 68 is affordable housing.
Yes, and there's a variety of them, meaning one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom, as required by the requirement.
And could you, just for the record, state what the 10 low, affordable income units are?
Oh, the breakdown, is that what you said?
Yeah, the breakdown, and, and what is it that these affordable units would, would make for? It's, I guess, yeah, reduced rents, correct?
There are requirements under statute based upon income level as to what you could set the rental at, and it's statutory, and it actually goes by county. So different counties have different statutory set income, and it is not controlled by the municipality in any respect at all. And usually, the municipality has a monitor- And usually the municipality has a monitor or an outside monitor...
A third party.
A third party that's appointed that regulates those rentals and controls that and checks the monitoring that what is charged is that based upon that direct report.
And then the assigned of these apartments are done fair and square, so it's...
Yes, it's not done, it's done through that...
It's not by the builder, it's not by the owner, it's not by the town?
There's an intermediary that's required.
I think it's important, I just want to make sure we understand that.
Yes.
So the regular rental, it basically comes to fifty-eight units?
Yes, that is, that is how it works.
Can you tell me the breakdown of the ten affordable housing units?
Yes, give me one second, I'm sorry.
I just want to get back into the, all the, the important details.
Yes, sorry, I was not up to that page, so I did not have it broken down, but I believe the breakdown is two three-bedroom, six two-bedroom and two one-bedroom for the ten units, which is fifteen percent. And the requirement differs, just for everyone's education, if it was a four-cell complex, let's say it was a condominium, or if it's a rental complex. This is based upon the fact that it is a rental complex, that is how the requirement is based.
So this is going to be for rentals?
Right, and, and your planner, maybe she just wants to stand up and say in the name for the record, she is agreeing with that analysis as...
Well, we'll get to our way, which is important. Fine. And I remember that we had, there'll be four levels of apartments, right, correct?
Correct.
And there, so there's grade, grade level for...
Correct. It's, uh, grade level...
It's going to be parking?
There's parking at grade, there's a lobby at grade and there's parking under grade. It's like a half level and that's what the architect explained.
Okay, we're just going, I know the testimony... And you have provided on the premises a hundred and thirty-two spaces, is that correct?
No, on the premises are...
Well, you need a hundred and thirty-two and you have a hundred...
On the premises.
On the premises.
And there's also forty-four off the premises in the new lot we are constructing across the street for the public.
Right, just do those numbers again. Need a hundred and thirty-two, yes?
Hundred on site.
Hundred on site.
And forty-four is...
Or across the street in a public, a new public lot that we are constructing for the municipality. And based upon RSIS, you're allowed to make parking, either street parking or off-site parking and that is what we're, we're doing in off-site lot. We do not count the street parking to meet the RSIS.
Good. Let me ask you this, there's this, since I also volunteered on the ambulance corps, I want to also make sure that you have the sizes, I want to go over, I don't think we covered that, the size of, of, of the elevator and all that stuff, but we'll do that later with the architect.
We did cover it and it is size for a, a stretcher, gurney is the right word.
As, what we call the stretcher, the gurney, uh, full-size or do, it's, it's, it's brought up?
Full-size.
Full-size, so it doesn't have to be collapsed or...
It don't have to be folded up.
Well, it's not me fold up, it's unfortunately a person in need.
But no, it is, it's designed to understand that and it is designed for full-size.
And there's, how many shafts, elevator shafts?
Two.
Two?
Correct.
And they go all the way down on the first level, uh, the below grade as well?
Correct.
Okay, well that's very important, because people can get sick also in their car.
Correct.
Now, across the screen, there's a public, a pole, a pole where the public siren is on, or as an default, uh, default, um, and, uh, system for the fire or whatever it is that we, that is being, when your building will be blocked. Are you gonna, you're gonna put that on the roof of the structure, correct?
So what we did is we received a letter from, I can't remember the gentleman's name, I'm sorry.
Larry Robinson.
Yes, and he said, "It is very possible that this building will block the siren."
Yes.
Based upon that, we will, if required by Mr. Robinson or the department of the municipality that controls that, at least he's not there, uh, we will relocate it on the building...
Yes.
Or on another appropriate spot that he might determine if needed, and we did put that on the record.
Okay, good. Yeah, I remember that, I just want to make sure that those are some of the points I'd like to make sure is, is covered. Now, um, you, you had testimony last time about the neighboring garages.
Behind.
Behind, or to the, behind or to the side?
Behind.
Behind. There was like eight or ten garages that would make into additional spaces, correct?
Twenty-four, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, and they are being removed and they are making onsite, three onsite parking areas on the site.
That's right, it was, those twenty-four old garages, okay, twenty-four old garages and...
I think it's becoming forty, but I, I don't want to tell you because I can't remember.
You said we construct, last time you said to construct forty surface parking spaces? Yeah, okay, that's, that's your business, that's what is your case, not my case.
Just, just to make sure that I understand what, what that's for, so if you're not, those spaces aren't being provided to this project, the point was that these new spaces will take other, other, uh, traffic or other parking off the street. That was the point of putting that on the record, right?
That was the point of putting it on the record.
Now, it's not your problem, it's not your client's property. Did you have any, do you know if your client had any discussions about who could use those forty spaces?
I represented that applicant, which is Marble Port, this name of that building, before the planning board, and the planning board required as part of that approval that those parking spaces only be used for the Marble Port building.
Okay, so that's a different, this was before the planning board, not the zone.
Right, and it's required that only be used for that.
Okay.
Because those garages are storage now and there's people that are not residents in the building that are using them.
Okay, all right, so that's good, all right. Good, let's, um, continue with your application, please.
Okay, so I wanted to call my next witness.
Go ahead.
Set your name clearly, spelling for the record.
David Juizmeski, spelled J-U-Z-M-E-S-K-I.
Okay, David, did you testify at the last meeting?
And then not.
Okay. Mr. Juizmeski, if you don't mind, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that any testimony offered this evening is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Oh, wonderful, and you're testifying in what field?
As a professional engineer.
And how long have you been so licensed?
Uh, over thirteen years.
And you've testified at this board or similar boards in the past?
I've testified before this board.
And your license is currently in effect?
It's currently in effect.
All right, Mr. Chairman?
If you want to. This, um, witness, can we ask somebody out there to...
Sandy, your noise can be...
I learned that law school. So, to, to make you understand what just, again, is going to happen, or what Ms. Berger would like to happen, is to qualify this person as an expert in the field of professional engineering. And you've already put on the record that he's a licensed, uh, engineer, and that means they can, he can seal plans and has a license number with the state of New Jersey and has been so for thirteen years. Do you have any, anyone who has any questions as to his qualification as a licensed engineer?
You have to come up and...
Yeah, doesn't mean... And only you can ask him questions to challenge, let, let me listen carefully, to challenge whether this person is a licensed engineer.
And you are Mr. Ayers?
No.
Ayers Court.
Court.
Okay, your name again, sir?
Gordon Brown.
Mr. Brown. Well, I think I got that part right, Mr. Brown, that's the only part I got right so far, is Ayers Court. All right, sir, go ahead.
Go ahead, ask questions only of this...
With all due respect, um, where were you certified in the state of New Jersey? State of New Jersey, sir. And have you, uh, any expertise in terms of, uh, traffic and parking, is that part of the...
I don't think there's a witness that's been testified to traffic or parking. He's an engineer, he's a building engineer.
There, there's an overlap, I can answer your question, but we have a specific traffic engineer that's handled this application specifically, I'm just doing the engineer portion.
So if I could, the layout of the garage is this witness?
Okay.
Moving onto the street is another witness? So, is that...
Okay. Well, thank you.
I just want to get some more...
Go ahead.
No problem, sir, that was to see.
Next person. State your name for the record, please, sir.
Moses Reyes, last name's called R-E-Y-E-S, resident engineer.
Mr. Reyes, you have a question or reason to challenge his credentials as an engineer?
Uh, just a question, so what field of engineering are you specialized in, civil, structural?
Civil.
Civil engineers. Um, in terms of the project, are you involved specifically to the design of the building or are you going to be involved also with the construction logistics and how things are going to be set up in terms of layout, areas?
Sure. The design of the building was conducted by an architect, we'll see who needs a layout, facilities, I'm not going to be involved with any construction portion, they'll have their own construction manager and G C for that.
Okay, so you're, you're specifically, um... So, so you're specifically involved with the civil section of the project?
Sir, 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 one sec. Go ahead. The question is, whether or not he's a qualified engineer?
Correct.
Construction, what happens later on, that is not the issue we're dealing with now, so he's presenting plans that...
Fair enough, I just wanted to understand how he was going to be involved with the project and, and his qualification for it, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome. Anyone else would like to ask questions as to the qualification of this engineer? Hang on, I'll accept your qualifications as a professional licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey.
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, then I'm going to proceed if that's all right.
Please.
Just for the record, by whom were you employed?
Neglia Engineering Associates.
And did Neglia Engineering Associates have, is the engineering firm that prepared the plans that were submitted to the board as part of this application?
That's correct.
And could you identify for the record those plans, the number of sheets, the dates of the plans, et cetera?
Sure. I can identify them, I think we, we marked this exhibit previously.
Right, but just for the record today...
Put the record in, let's make sure we understand what drawing you're talking about.
Understood.
And the public is...
That's why I wanted to do it, so while we talk, everyone's on the same page.
I want to be discussing, uh, Sheets C one point zero zero to Sheets nine point oh two. They're dated, uh, November twenty-first, two thousand eighteen, last revised January twenty-fifth, fifteenth, two thousand nineteen.
I know there's a lot of...
Okay, the other thing we all keep in mind, especially if we're not used to having a court reporter in the room, that the court reporter is a very, very smart lady and she's very talented, but she has one limitation, two arms and can only take down one person speaking at a time. So it's very important also, counsel, counselor and, and your expert, it's very important, please make sure that, you know, the colloquy is sequential and the same goes for me and everybody else. Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Please, can you get that?
Yes.
At the last hearing, we marked as A fifteen part of the, I'm sorry, at the last hearing, we marked as A fifteen part of the engineering packet, not the whole. So should we, to, a new marking for this?
Well, again, A fifteen was engineering drawings set, seventeen pages...
That's the set, okay.
Identified by C numbers. Exhibit A two was page A zero zero one with, with the same dates you just mentioned through A two eleven, thirty-one pages includes architectural and civil engineering drawings. So you, you would tell us what...
Okay, then we're all right, I just wanted to make sure because the cover sheet and the transcript...
What are we referring to though?
We're referring to the A fifteen.
Okay, so A fifteen includes those documents that you mentioned, are, you're going to be discussing tonight, and those are Sheets one point oh oh to nine point oh two, and these are all identified by C numbers, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
So, before we get, begin, and I know we have a lot of people here, your job is to do the, and civil engineering, so the architect, you work with the architect and you place the building on the lot and do the drainage and do the parking and other site improvements, is that correct?
That is right.
And could you explain to the, to the board what you did in this regard?
If I, if it's all right with the board, I'd like you to start with Sheet, Sheet C, uh, C two point zero zero. This is the existing conditions in the demolition plan, just want to provide some background information on the existing site, just for comparative reasons. The property itself contains three contiguous lots, lots three, four and five on block five, zero, zero, four. Two of the three lots are currently developed, lot three has a portion of the parking, has a portion of the parking on it is angled parking. Lot four is an existing office building, lot five is a vacant lot. It's a vacant lot consisting of various vegetative, um, you know, growths and, but other than that, it is vacant. The lot, uh, lot number four that contains the existing, uh, building has perimeter parking consisting of eleven parallel spaces and twelve angled spaces. The angled spaces, as you enter from State Street, are, don't meet your code as far as length, there's an effective length of fourteen feet, the requirement within your zone is twenty feet. And, um, the drainage onsite is in a way where there's no, uh, conveyance control, meaning that any runoff that would fall on this property conveys basically in the west only direction through adjacent properties, similar with the vacant lot.
What are you saying, they go to the, the water runoff goes to the other property, it goes into...
It goes, currently, it goes to the other property.
Oh, currently?
Current, no, yeah, this is, these are the existing conditions.
Okay, existing conditions, and it currently is going to other property?
That's correct.
Is it your intention with the engineering to control the runoff and the water on the combined lots?
It is, Chairman, and I'll get to that as, as I get into my testimony. Um, with respect to the perimeter of our, of our property, we have the existing, um, buildings are located adjacent to this property, you have an existing garage just west of us, that building is set back point five feet from that property line. That's located about point nine feet from that property line, and then you have, you have an existing, uh, building, I guess, just north of us that's set back from the sidewalk line approximately ten feet. I'll get into why I mentioned that, again, just for comparative reasons. The lot itself, um, is serviced by existing utilities located within State Street, you have a storm line and a sanitary line, both located under the sidewalk or under your tree belts, and you have existing gas, water and electrical services all available on State Street. That being said, I'd like to get into the proposed improvements for the property.
And, and just before you get to that, as part of the application, are we seeking to merge the three lots?
Yeah, we're, we're seeking to consolidate all three lots into a single lot.
Thank you.
So, to get into what we are proposing today for you, I'd like to start with Sheet C four point zero zero. This is the ground floor site plan improvement plan. What this illustrates is a proposed building for the property, as you can see, we have a lobby that can access at ground level from the, the sidewalk that's along the frontage. This sidewalk, as well as the curb along the property frontage, the full width of three hundred feet will be completely reconstructed, will provide access from that public sidewalk into our main lobby area, and alternative accesses for stairways that are located on either side of the building, uh, to the, to the building as well from, from the public sidewalk. We have two full movement driveways on either side of the building, one full movement driveway, the northerly one provides access to a half-story lower level parking deck, the, the southerly driveway provides access to a half-story upper, upper parking deck, and I'll get into that configuration of that parking deck. The building itself, mainly the lobby area is set from the, set back from the front parking line by ten point five feet, from either side, fifteen feet, and from the rear, this is the, the second floor, uh, parking deck and residential above, that is set back fifteen feet.
Why is it set back fifteen feet? Why is it set back 15 feet? Would you give more space if you don't set it back?
Why is the building set back 15 feet?
No, no, you said the parking is set back 15 feet.
No, the... I know, I shouldn't... The second-level parking level is set back 15 feet. The building above is set back 15 feet. However, the lower level is built to that property line.
So, why don't the second... The second deck, I mean, which is going to be ground level, correct?
The second deck is going to be a half-story below grade.
And why don't you make that to the property line?
Why not make the second level to the property line?
So, you get that more space?
Well, we... Because we feel that we can accommodate the units that we proposed on-site with this current parking configuration. We have 100 parking spaces.
I understand that. 100 parking space, that's not my concern. But wouldn't you have a little more turn radius?
Yeah, I'll get into that. I'll show you.
Let me finish my question.
Sorry.
Wouldn't you have more space if you pushed a second deck? I guess, the... Just below grade, correct?
Right.
Push it all the way to the property line? Or, you know, where the concrete is going to be built? When I say property line, obviously not property line, but, you know, subject to the building foundation that you're putting. Why don't you push it all the way out? And that way, you get more turn radius. Maybe you can squeeze some extra, you know, tender parking, more of that, or something else. So, you maybe can configure more than 100 spaces on the premises.
Can I answer that question through the next exhibit?
No. Let's answer it now.
Well, the reason I ask you that is it shows that configuration and those turning movements on the next sheet.
Don't even get my question.
Could you... Could you make... Would you have the ability on this site to make that deck go all the way to the property line?
Potentially, you can add additional parking spaces. It would be tandem if you built it out further.
How many additional parking spaces could you create by doing that approximately?
I can calculate it.
Good. Go ahead. Take your time.
So, this is Sheet 4.01. And what you're asking is kind of what's illustrated for the lower level.
Exactly.
For the upper level, you would get approximately 27 additional parking spaces if you were to extend that upper level out to the back, as you suggested. In addition...
And they would be tandem also?
They would be tandem, similar to what is shown on the lower...
But right now, they're not tandem.
They are not tandem at this time.
So, you would have to add 27 additional parking spaces? And they would all be tandem, as well as what's on the lower level?
That's correct.
Okay.
How many on the... Second-floor parking?
How many spaces total?
How many spaces do you have there?
We have 38 proposed spaces.
I'm sorry?
38.
And you would add 27?
It would actually be 25, since I can't tandem ADA spaces. They need to be unstructured.
So, it would be 38 plus 25?
That's correct. Of course, and I still have to... I would have to look at maneuverability, where ADA spaces are, rating impacts to the rear property line and that sort of thing.
So, is your testimony, and you can configure the spaces, so in total, you would have 125, give or take one or two?
On the spot?
I'm not finished. You got a chair? I'll be around. Harder? Is your testimony, and you possibly could configure the site with 125, give or take a few spots, because you said you have to configure something around the ADA and so on. But approximately 125 spaces on the premises with a push-out of the second deck, which is one, you know, the second deck, not the lower one.
Understood.
On the premises, potentially. Are you fairly certain about that?
Am I fairly certain about it? I'd like to sign something before I commit to that.
That's why you're a professional engineer. I understand. You know, you don't give an opinion until you try it out on your own, on your own level. But is in your professional understanding, as you stand here today, that it's possible that you can add 24, 25 spaces without taking away the ability to park on the second deck?
In a perfect world, yes, you can add them by extension.
What do you mean, "perfect world"?
Like I said, without, on the spot, I can't agree to add a whole level of parking out of... I don't look at the structural...
Does the building get compromised at all? That's the structure...
Well, that's what I'm saying. I got to see what the impacts are, not only to our own buildings, but to the agency property owners.
You have to put, you know, columns, et cetera, so...
Okay. Yeah. So, we're going to... After this question, I'm going to take a break, because I think the court reporter needs a little break. Rest her hands. And as soon as we come up, we come back in five minutes, we're going to do further on that. Thank you.
Before I continue, I just want to remind the public and the board that this proceeding is going under the municipal land use law and the regulations under the municipal land use law. And for all the years that I've done this, testimony of anyone, all witnesses, all the public, have to be made under oath, subject to people doing cross-infamination. So, I ask the board, and I implore the board, that this type of procedure to allow testimony, and that was what was done, is not important with the municipal land use law. And I would ask the board to disregard saying, because that is not what is permitted under the municipal land use law with regard to the application. And a township's regulation must follow state law. The township's regulation cannot go against the mandate of the state law. And when people got up and spoke specifically with regard to this application and talked about traffic and their testimony about traffic, and said they spoke for other organizations in the area in regard to the application, this should not be allowed.
Ms. Berg, I can only tell you that.
I think we are pretty much aware of the applicable law and how the conduct of a meeting is to take place and what is considered testimony when there's sworn testimony or not sworn testimony. I think most of us here, maybe, except for one newer person who's catching up very quickly, we're all aware of the evidentiary burden and how the testimony is conducted. So, with that note, please proceed.
Do I want to remind you and the public...
To the mic, Thor.
Sorry. Do I want to remind you and the public that before the process of good and well began, the public was made aware of that exactly what you're talking about? And as board members, I think we understand what our responsibilities are and our obligation to consider what evidence is being provided and what is not. So, your statement is, I think, noted and understood.
Please proceed.
And also, just one more thing. If you look at municipal land use law, applications and documents have to be put on file with the municipality. And it's not required that there be evidence or other documents that, given the schedule, that they're putting things online or anything else.
Let's go. Let's go. Would you testify to this? Continue. It's your call. Lucas? I know, I understand.
I think I deserve that ability as well.
Of course. The only issue is, we have that good and welfare concept. The public is allowed to speak. That's what our ordinance is. I... My suggestion is not that you spend your time responding, because the public has spoken. What you... People are going to leave soon. I mean, it's getting late.
That's okay with me.
Please, please.
It's fine.
No, no. Let's go. There's no reason to respond. I'm going to tell you, please do not respond. Put your evidence on the agenda and evidence on the record. Just please, just proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
There's no reason to respond.
Chairman, may I proceed with the drawing now?
Whatever the question was.
Okay. The sheet before you is Sheets C 4.01. These are the same maintenance plan for the lower and upper-level parking areas. The top half of the sheet is the lower-level parking area. Access to the lower parking area is from the northern full-movement driveway. Access into the site, you go down a driveway, it's fully striped and controlled. It provides an opportunity to park at 62 parking spaces, some of them at tandem. We have ADA required parking spaces at this level. And from this level, you can access a lobby area that has three stairways, actually two each corner, one entirely located, as well as an elevator area. This here, this floor, the lower-level parking floor, you can get to the upper-level lobby as well as the residential areas. The bottom half of the sheet, an access through the southern driveway is on upper-level parking, similar to the lower-level parking, and this is striped accordingly with stop control signage for, you know, ease of circulation. And at this level, you access the parking area for 38 parking spaces. And as you can see, you have sufficient width on both levels. You have a 24-foot-wide driveway to access both the parking spaces as well as the ADA spaces that are located on both levels of the parking deck.
And the amount of ADA parking provided, does that comply with the code?
Absolutely.
And with regard to the parking, have you determined if circulation is available to make the turns properly within the parking grounds?
Absolutely.
And in the parking garage?
That's correct.
And there are several of the parking spaces that do not conform with the municipal... With the width as required by the municipality?
That's correct.
Or RSIS?
RSIS. And municipality, they have similar requirements for the width.
Could you identify for the board what that deficiency is and where that deficiency occurs?
Sure. The minimum width within the RSIS standards, as well as the municipal code, is nine-foot wide. Our spaces, for the most part, are nine-foot wide, with the exception of the locations of the columns for the building and the residential above. At those locations, the spaces that run down to a width of eight feet for very short period of time until you bypass that column. I'd just like to know those columns are not located where people with open and closing doors are on the passenger side. So, they're located at the, you know, at the back end of the spaces as well as the back end of the tandem spaces. So, it won't obstruct the person who may go to place that is their car.
And with regard to that spaces, I believe at the last hearing, someone asked a question as to the number of spaces that has that deficiency. Could you please identify for the record the number of spaces?
There's a total of 38 six spaces that has that deficiency, that square width of the length.
And again, just so we're clear, that width only happens at the column spot, not for the full length of the space. Is that correct?
That's correct.
How wide is it on the widest... How narrow is it on the widest part between the two, between the pillow and the next lawn space?
It reduces to eight foot, from nine foot down to eight foot at the column location. Then it expands once you bypass that column.
And how many feet is it from the end of the, of the, so to speak, the wall where the parking space starts?
Okay, to the column? Yep. That distance is 15 feet to the center of that column.
15 feet? How long is a car?
Anywhere between most average cars, probably around 18 feet, I would say.
So, it'll be around the trunk space of a, if it was a sedan?
That's correct.
I would say you could probably open up all four doors on a 404.
Okay. Thank you. Proceed.
One of the questions that was raised at the last meeting we were trying to address is there was a question as to where a bicycle rack may be located? So, could you please point that out?
Sure. Bicycle rack would be located in the middle side of the building, at least on the ground floor level right next to the main lobby area.
So, there's ability to...
Bicycle rack, local bicycle spaces.
Is that outside the building?
Yes, outside the building.
Like on the sidewalk?
No.
Adjacent to the sidewalk? Near the lobby area.
And about how many?
I think we were looking at between three to five bicycle spaces.
Three to five?
To accommodate three to five.
Yes.
That'd be three to five.
That's correct.
You could do better than that?
If the request is to increase that...
The request is there?
Okay.
We can certainly look at it and provide you with a number. That's why we're addressing the issue, so if there's changes, we could address it further.
Okay.
With regard to the parking...
Let's go over a few things. So, we are addressing maybe how many spaces you could get for parking if you move that second... The second level of parking all the way out to the wall. By approximately... We had the one down, and it's the second parking level.
You asked the question.
Right. We asked the question if you could design something where you could squeeze additional 25 approximately spaces out of there. Right? And the other thing, Mr. Rosen, is how many bicycle parking spaces can you accommodate for that?
We have ample room to accommodate whatever one you want. I think, you know, 12 would fit in everything we showed.
What about motorcycles? They don't take the space out of it.
Well, for motorcycles, we do have a hashed area within the parking deck where they can be covered and parked without any trouble.
How many can you fit on there?
That space itself is greater than 10 feet, wide greater than 18 feet, approximately 18 feet long. You could probably fit two bicycle spaces.
Two motorcycles.
Two motorcycles.
Make that as a designated motorcycle area.
Yeah. And in addition, we have another area on the upper level. This hashed area is unused right now. We can add additional motorcycle spaces at that location.
Okay.
That's good. And actually, that's another area that we actually need some bicycle spaces that's actually covered from the elements if, you know, to provide after the residential building.
The outside space, what I would think would be for visitors. I was thinking more about what could you do for residents.
Right. I think we have those areas both on the upper floor. Actually, on the lower floor, we have these areas where we provide on-site.
So, if we know that's a concern, we'll address it. And that's why we brought it up, so we can answer the question. Now, with regard to drainage on each of these levels?
Sure.
Have you dealt with that? And have you come up with a design for that?
I have. As I noted earlier, there is no drainage control existing currently from this site. And the way the drainage patterns run from that existing office building and the existing parking line is uncontrolled. It goes directly to our adjacent properties.
Okay.
This is, oh, sorry about that. Sheet 6.00, this is the ground floor drainage plan. I apologize. So, currently, there's no drainage infrastructure at all on the existing property. What we propose to do is construct a detention system along the perimeter of this proposed building. That detention system will not only eliminate, I mean, eliminate completely 100% of that runoff that would have otherwise gone to adjacent properties, but reduces the amount of flow involving that go directly into station. And the way we do that is we capture that runoff in this underground detention system as the entire roof, as the side lawn areas, as well as the front lawn areas. By doing that, we actually reduce the flow rate going to the municipal system and of course, requiring DPD requirements. And we actually exceed those requirements with this detention system.
And that's all supposed to be approved with engineering?
Yes, sir.
And the engineering department has in fact reviewed that?
That's correct.
What are the comments from the engineering department?
If you want, I can go over the engineering letter now.
Well, let's do that. So, we have that, since you're talking about the drainage, I don't care. Let's get that over.
And it's a letter of Toronto Reap Halls Engineering dated February 21st, 2019.
That's correct. Your engineer has requested, although...
And you just said... And you just said the number of comments when you.
And made up the, made up the number. I mean, the letter of.
Yes, it was February twenty-first.
Have we marked that in as anything?
No, I don't.
Do you want to mark that as a D number and tie it up, or you want to mark it in as an A number?
You are.
Yeah, I was gonna summarize.
We have, yeah, we have.
And do you want to have your engineer comment?
Yeah, let's do that. Stating names for the record, who the township engineer?
The zoning board engineer.
Zoning board engineer.
Joseph Ince, Toronto Beach Hall's engineer.
I'm sorry. Problem, I see?
V I N C D.
Louder.
V I N C D.
Toronto Beach Hall's, the borough or the board.
Zoning board engineer.
Will you produce the report?
I did.
Was it dated?
February twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen.
I'm gonna mark that as D one, if that's okay with you?
Let me just teach you a trick. When you lean, lean over, you can't project. Stand up, you get air, you get it out.
All right.
All right, otherwise, nobody can hear you.
Okay.
Good.
We did review the drainage system, and it is designed in accordance with the rules of the township and the DPD. And there are a few minor technical things that we could work out in the report, but the design as proposed is reasonable and it will function according to the regulations.
Okay, and it's compliant with the law of the town and the state?
That's correct. We did, one thing we did talk to Mr. Dzmeski about, you know, during phone calls, is if the parking lot across the street is approved, that this development's approved and that parking lot is approved, that lot is also gonna require a drainage system. He may want to look at the both sites combined, because there is limited space on this site. He may be able to overall make a reduction to the state street drainage system by providing more detention on the lot across the street and providing less detention on this site. If all the drainage goes to one place, that will still meet the requirements of both. One thing that was not in the letter, and we thought of after the letter was written, was that the water quality controls are not required on the site in question. However, if the parking lot across the street was to be approved, and the whole development is to be approved, the parking lot across the street would require water quality controls, which would be an underground chamber that requires maintenance. Since that is the township, the T-NX property, we think that it would be somewhat of a burden on the township to have to maintain that underground, underground water quality device. So we would recommend, as a condition of the approval, some sort of a maintenance agreement with the developer went into effect, so that the developer will be responsible to maintain the water quality device across the street on the township lot.
Just to be, just to be clear, Miss Berger, is your client actually gonna do the contracting work for the partner, or is she paying for it? How's that working?
Contract?
I know, I, I went.
She'll admit it, Meg has been about it.
Unless something changes, and as you know, we're gonna go back to the town, um, and council again. But unless something changes, my client will be constructing it on the township's plan.
Okay, thank you. According to the township specifications.
Yes.
And whatever the, our engineer indicate with respect to the drainage and runoff, et cetera, they'll be, you'll be complying with that, whatever, correct?
Yes, yes, they're gonna work that out if they want to do more on one lot or more on the other, just like the township engineer said.
Right. If, if it's.
If it's approved, but conceptually, we take no exceptions to the drainage as designed. It's reasonable, and anything technical can be worked out after approval.
Okay.
One more thing while you're here, if I could. Was a suggestion at the last hearing by, I'm not sure who, about having a crosswalk possibly across the street from the new parking lot, municipal parking lot, to across the street, and having that marked off. I don't know who made that suggestion, but do you have any opinion on that, or would that be?
I would think that that is a good recommendation, given the volume of pedestrians in the area and the fact that a parking lot will be going in across, well, if approved, will be going in across the street. However, that would have to go to the mayor and council for approval, but.
Right, it's none of our, our personal.
No, but it is.
Well, we can ask that if it's, if it will be approved, the developer or the owner of the one hundred states will pay for it.
Right, and at least make the application. If the mayor and council decides that's not appropriate, then that would be their choice, but that can be.
And you would stipulate to that? You'll pay for the cost of that, if it's.
And, and.
Yes?
Yes, I just.
If I may, Chairman, actually, I didn't speak to your borough engineer, I spoke to your borough traffic engineer regarding this crosswalk. I did prepare an exhibit to show to him, I talked to him about it. His name is Charles Aligo, he works for your traffic engineering firm.
Okay.
And we, we went back and forth, and we were willing to provide that crosswalk centrally located. So it provides crossing through our parking lot as well as the municipal parking lot to that existing bus stop.
And could you mark that exhibit for the record?
This, yes. I prepared this for this meeting, you don't have this in your.
Oh, this is a new exhibit?
Yes, it's a new exhibit.
Okay. And what is that exhibit?
It's called, it's exhibit number one, zoning board adjustment exhibit number one.
Because with a response to a question the board raised at the last meeting.
So it's A one?
Yes.
Right, we mark, is this A one?
No, it's a new exhibit.
Okay, so it would be, it's a new exhibit, am I mistaken, or it would be A sixteen?
A seventeen.
A seventeen.
What's A sixteen?
A sixteen is the, is the negative drainage calculation.
A seventeen is what?
I don't know, I'll use a book. Seventeen is exhibit one, that's what it's called.
A seventeen is just called exhibit.
Exhibit one, and it says board adjustment, and it says drainage, it's a.
No, it's just.
It's just.
Exhibit one. And it's dated April third, two thousand and nineteen.
Got it, thank you.
All right. I have a question.
Yes.
We though, without the building going out to completely cover the lower level, you're gonna have open parking on that upper level. Well, that's, you're gonna have a snow problem. Will the snow be completely removed? Because if you have a parking situation now and you pile snow, we're making a bad parking situation worse. Like if the snow's removed, you don't lose any spaces, right?
No, that's, that's correct.
Right, so, so would it be fair for you to stipulate that the snow won't be piled on the upper level parking, that'll be removed from the problem? Because it's a parking.
No, understood, that's, that's a good question. It will portion out the, the upper level, whether or not it pumps out, will be open to the element, around four thousand square feet. It's a small area, but open nonetheless. We do have these perimeter striped areas where we don't have any parking. So we could, A, when it's a, it's a small snowfall, push it to those perimeter areas. This is not the same areas for the motorcycle parking, these are separate areas.
Can you define small, small snowfall?
No, if you.
It's like, define the word soon, you say small snowfall. I pay somebody to remove my snow, it's two inch minimum, after two inches, I'm paying for it to be removed.
Right, no, if it's a few inches, I'll define.
Or few, two, two, okay.
Even if it's up to.
Are you okay?
Give me a moment, but if they slow down.
I'll slow down. I'll, I'll slow down. We can accommodate up to six inches or even more, depending on, because snow is highly consolidatable. Depending on moisture content of the physical snow that falls, it can solid up to five to thirty to one, based on the foot, so the foot falls.
I guess, I guess my point is, if parking is tight.
Right.
And on defining snow, it's like soon, but if we can't come up with a number where the snow's going to be removed from the lot, do you understand that this could be a giant problem?
So let me just address that again. One is that, those spots over here, unless it's during the middle of the workday when everyone is at work or out with their car, it's really gonna be falling on their car.
Excuse me, wait a minute. If we are pushing the parking over to the end.
We're talking about, we're talking about this plan, that was what was the question we asked. But this is a rental building, and as you know, in any rental building, the landlord has to satisfy that and to make sure the property is well taken care of and maintained from the beginning. If there's too much snow and there's no place to do it, I did ask that question to my client. And they said, if it's such a substantial snowfall that there's no room to put it on the site, they will have it removed on the site.
But my thing, we're getting back to what I said before, it's like defining the word soon. And, and I, I am concerned, because this comes up with a lot of the properties where parking's concerned.
They will not, they will not pile snow in a spot, so the spot cannot be used for parking.
But if you're gonna pile on that little.
That's not a spot.
Side.
That's not a spot. That was what you're concerned is, they will not pile snow in a spot, so a spot cannot be used for parking.
My concern is, my concern is, there's a parking problem here, we're using some off-site parking. And I, I know this might be cement, but I'm more concerned that if we don't address the problem and we potentially lose spaces, we're exacerbating the problem that we all know exists.
Well, that's why we're putting it on the record, we will not pile snow in a spot, such that a spot cannot be used.
I'm asking that the snow at a certain inch level, like they've done with commercial lots on my driveway, be removed.
And we said, if there's a problem with the snow, and it will be removed, but a commercial lot, for example, a lot where you go, it's sad all night and it's snowing, you go, there doesn't usually have cars in it already. This will have some cars in it already, because these are residences overnight. So I tell you, if it is a problem, and clearly, we, I don't, can't tell you two inches or three inches, that's what your, my expert couldn't say either, we will have it removed from site. That is something we're agreeing to, that's what we're stipulating to, and the town can fix it. I don't know how to say it otherwise, because I don't want to say to you, six inches, well, it should have been removed to five inches, I don't know. That's why we're saying.
That was why I said, we're trying to define the word soon. My, my position is that with parking being tight, if we get a snowfall, whether it's substantial in my mind or substantial in somebody else's mind, the potential to lose parking spaces moves. And I'm more concerned that if we have to give variances, or we gotta get a parking lot across the street, this is gonna be a problem.
Right, and, and as you know, in New Jersey, some days we have snow overnight and then by eleven o'clock, it's sunny and it's all melted. And we don't know. And so what we're putting on the record is, if it is required, we will do so and we will not pile the snow in parking spaces.
Well, the problem I see, the concern is on the other lot across the street, this one only has a.
We're not, we're not maintaining that lot, the town is maintaining that lot.
I, I think I was misunderstood, it is a township lot across the street. What I'm simply recommending, the township is going to have that and maintain the lot. What I'm recommending is that that particular water quality structure requires a maintenance contract.
Back, please, be quiet.
And it has, and it requires maintenance above and beyond what the DPW typically does. So in that, I would recommend that the.
That.
That be maintained by the developer, but not the, not the lot, no, that's township problem.
Why don't we then stipulate that the developer will maintain the lot for snow?
That's up to you guys.
I don't think this, this, it's between the municipality and the town, and the town has certain regulations that have to be followed.
Well, maybe then the developer may, if the township's own desire, since you are utilizing the property, maybe the developer and the owner of the property should take care of that lot that is for benefit or at least added benefits to the parking.
Mr. Meyer, I think that's beyond our, our control, because the town, the mayor and council has the authority to determine what happens to that, and they might try to do that, but it's not for us to come up with those regulations.
I didn't say the regulations. If the mayor and council would like the developer to be in, in charge of snow removal on that particular lot, since taking this into consideration, or the applicant wish to take that lot into consideration, would the applicant then stipulate that they will take care of the snow removal?
I'll have to ask my client, and I'll come back to evidence for my students.
Okay. Are you finished this line? Can I ask you a couple of questions? So last hearing, we spoke about the entrance to, there's two entrances to the parking lots, right? There's one that goes down and there's one that goes to the ground level. And the board was concerned about the safety of the public.
Quiet, please.
The public's not interested, you're, you're in the meeting.
Private conversations somewhere else.
This is for the public's benefit, I would hope that they would be interested in hearing this testimony. We were concerned about the sightlines of vehicles that are crossing pedestrians right away, crossing the sidewalk. We wanted to make sure that there was adequate sightlines for the public to be able to see vehicles entering and exiting.
I can answer that.
So, so just, just, let me answer the question. So from your standpoint, do you feel that these, what you provide or what's provided for the design is gonna, is gonna, A, controlled traffic coming out of the, out of the driveway, out of the parking lot, so that the public is protected, public can see the cars coming out, will have adequate time to prepare, and the drivers, conversely, will have to be able to see pedestrians coming?
Sure, I'll, I'll address that. At both driveways, we have traffic signage, which will have stop control, vehicles getting out.
A gate, a gate or what?
No, a physical stop sign.
Okay.
The pavement markings. The gates will be internal to the site. But as you approach and exit the driveways on either side, you have markings on the floor stipulating stop. You have signage at each location indicating stop. You have plenty of sight distance on either side at both driveways. Now, this is, well, this is not a county road. We comply with county standards with respect to sight distance at both driveways, as well as actual standards on both driveways.
So again, for the public's knowledge, what are those standards and how, what are those sightlines, how much is being provided?
Um, the, I do not illustrate it on this plan. I know it was a question from your engineer as well. Based on the speed limit, I believe the speed limit within, within this road is forty-five approximately. We have more than three hundred feet of clear sight distance on both sides of the.
Do you feel the stop sign is enough to control an exiting car, so that it has to physically come to a stop? But the, the stop sign is not enough. Can we control a car that has to physically stop and look? Can we do anything like that? Can we, can we do a gate, can we do a bump? What, what can we do to, to not rely on someone having to stop or not? Hopefully, everybody's a, a cop and, and capable driver, but we can't always rely on that. Can we, can we do something to physically make a car stop and have to look?
Right, there's several ways you can address that. If you want something physical on the ground where the driver can feel something, making him stop. One is a speed bump.
Okay.
Speed table, it was a little bit wider, and you have a speed bump. Speed bump, it's a small one, it's about twelve inches. Speed bump is around seven foot wide, and you have a speed cable, those are much wider, where you come up to a platform and you come back down. We could potentially introduce something on both sides of that driveway to assist with that.
So I would, I would hope that you would come up with something that would provide maximum.
Sure.
Safety for the public, that these cars must stop, come, come to a stop, they have no choice, and they must observe pedestrians, and conversely, pedestrians must can be able to see the car coming to stop.
Actually, this is. Which is your recommendation, will you implement it with a device?
Actually, your client stipulate, you will provide that, and you can, you can put that in.
Yeah, I'll have it reviewed by your engineer, your transit attendant, whoever first.
Good, thank you.
Okay, keep on.
And just a reminder, there's a gate inside the garage that goes up first, so people are not just driving through and out.
There'll be an entry card?
There's a, uh, is it a?
Bob.
A, a bob kind of car.
I'm sorry, did we talk about the idea of a bob and that causing traffic to queue across the sidewalk?
No, we were talking about that there was room for cars to queue as necessary.
On the way in.
Right, and, and he's asking on the way out, and the gate still has to go up on the way out, so it's not just driving.
I'm, I'm more concerned. I'm, I'm more concerned about cars coming out.
Right.
Cars coming in, public can see that. Coming out, you don't always see that, and sometimes people may leave inebriated, they may not, they may not be paying attention, so...
But what I was just pointing out, just for those who didn't hear, is that there is a gate, so that it's not someone just driving through the parking lot from their car, they have to stop at the gate, and then proceed.
That's, that's what I like to see, they must stop, they have no choice.
And then proceed, and then there's a stop sign, et cetera.
Okay, good, thank you.
If I may, we'll add one more thing regarding the drainage. And it's a, a stoof observation by your engineer, you have an existing municipal storm line that runs under substantial trees, it's right behind the curb line, directly under the trees. He requested that we relocate that storm line away from those tree roots, if, if it's not impacted yet, they will be soon. So we will modify the drainage plan to move that municipal sewer line into the road, and out of that, that pocket of root system.
Okay.
All right? If I may, I'd like to move down to the...
Ms. Berger?
Just ask a question, just one.
So, one other comment that came up is loading and unloading, and how will we treat it? The same exhibit that we, we went over...
Loading, loading, unloading what?
Furniture, when you're moving in and moving out, or even typical deliveries, yes, and whatnot. That same exhibit that went over, that illustrated the crosswalk, illustrates two ways we can handle that, uh, traffic. And I have actually, eleven by seventies, if I can ask you, and also you can see it a little bit better, what, what can occur.
And this was, someone asked a question, and asked if there was something we could do, so we're trying to address it, like the bicycle and everything else.
And that's the drawing, right?
That's the drawing.
Yes, yes.
The public should know that they're handing out a mini, uh, scare, but the drawing is there, that we are talking about, yeah.
So with this plan...
It's the same plan.
Okay. Just give us the number, so we're not re-changing it. What's the number we're referring to?
Is it the number one?
One.
You just discussed the...
I guess seventeen.
Number seventeen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen. What this plan offers is an illustration of how, uh, moving trucks can access the site, as well as deliveries. So you have two options, there, the curb-to-curb width of State Street, as illustrated, 70 feet. Your parking spaces take up about eight feet on either side. You have an available width from your parking spaces to the center line of the road of 27 feet. Typical park driveway, or roadway lanes are approximately 12 feet. And what's illustrated here is, not, not that we would need or ever use a W67, which is a very large truck, most trucks that would access a one- or two-bedroom would be a single unit, 30-foot long truck, but for illustrative purposes, I illustrated a very large truck at this site, and you can see a, the movement of another large truck, if it bypassed that double parked vehicle, without any impact, nor coming into contact with opposing traffic. That being said, what I've also illustrated at the northernmost driveway is a potential loading area, off the street, off-site, that could provide...
Is it 10 feet? That 10-foot loading area?
That's right, that's right, Chairman. It's 10 foot wide, 30 foot long. Again, we can accommodate, if requested, by the board, a loading area in that corner, off-site, off the street, loading, it wouldn't be used very often, once everyone moves in, that, that loading area would be, you know, almost never used, except for deliveries, but we have the opportunity and the space to provide that loading area, if the board chose that that is a requested...
You know, one of the board members asked if there was any way to do something like that, so we thought we would explore it and show you that there is, if the board felt that's the way they want us to go, there is the ability to do something to that effect.
So just so there's not confusion, can you point to the potential truck that's parked and delivering?
Okay, well, I have a vehicle parked here.
That's a vehicle, another truck.
Parked truck.
Okay, now the path of trucks could try and get around?
He goes directly right around.
And where's the center line?
The center line is right below him, with ample room.
So that's eastbound?
That is, yes.
Show the public, do it again from the other side, so everybody can see.
Sure.
From the other side.
From the other side.
Excuse me.
Point to the, point to the parked car.
So if you have a parked car, if you have a double parked...
I didn't go in the way from...
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you have a double parked truck, another truck can bypass that double parked truck without obstructing oncoming traffic, stay within our side of the road, bypass it, and continue without affecting any traffic that will be, I guess, westbound on State Street.
Now, the west, westbound traffic, can you point, can you point to the path of westbound traffic while this is all going on?
So the other truck, as he approaches, with, like you said, this is the center line of the road.
Right.
As you can see, those trucks will never come into contact with each other.
And could you also just point out for the public, because they might not have seen it, where the spot is on this site?
For the other...
All right, so the other option is this off-site spot that we, that we provided, just, you know, directly adjacent to the building, that's 10 foot wide, 30 foot long, where vehicles come in, park, load, unload, and leave the same way he came in.
Next question.
I'm going to sheet number C 7.00, this is the landscaping plan for the project. As you can see, although there's minimal landscaping on the existing building, we tried to unify the area as a whole, and included a substantial amount of landscaping. Along the front of State Street, we're including some, five ones of cherry trees, they bloom pink during the, during the spring months. Along each side of the building, we have some dogwoods, those bloom around pink whitish color. We have a variety of annuals, shrubbery along the building frontage, and each side of the building, we have buffer landscaping, arbonne, azaleas, and a variety of other bushes that could provide some, some color, some, some interest along the sides, and buffering, as well as along the front.
Is there, is there a play, play area?
There is no play area.
Could one be put in, you know, space on the property?
There is an interior room that's on the lobby level for the residents of the building to use, and possibly that would also be made available for children in the building to use. I would have to look at the plan, if I can get that answer, I'll get...
Kurt, could you, could you do a study, and see if you could provide, or what you would provide for adequate play area, safe play area for young children?
Do you request in, internal or external?
Well, give us both options. Give us, if it can't be done outside, tell us, if it could be done inside, tell us what that would be.
And, yep. Was it no questions on last year, you know, go into the lighting?
Yeah, let's, you know what, before you start with the lighting, I think it's now in the, in the two minutes to 11 o'clock, let's, let's hold it here, and the next time you'll pick up with the lighting, I'll make a note that you asked for the lighting.
There's a question. Anyone for that next...
Next meeting will be May, May 2nd, right? Second is the regular 16th. May 2nd, Ms. James, we would continue this manner, make a motion...
Can we ask questions about that, May 2nd?
Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted, yeah, I want to make sure that the public is aware of, if you had any questions to what's been said, please write it down, bring it with you, we can refer back, but we'll have an opportunity. That's the best we can do. That's the best we can do, we're all volunteers, and...
And, and we're volunteers to...
I understand, I understand.
And I wouldn't be so upset, except that the chair said, he was very explicit, and he said, as they give testimony, we could ask.
Yes, yeah, you, I...
Let me explain how this goes again. I'd like to explain the thing. Your testimony is concluded by this expert, you will have the opportunity to ask a question of this expert. And let, let's just focus here, because I think the public would like to know. Next meeting, you're going to have this expert continue the testimony, is that correct?
Yes, if the expert is available, and I haven't gotten to discuss his counter...
Well, let's do that right now, let's discuss this expert on the spot, on the spot, let's see if he's available on May, on May 2nd. He's, he's May 2nd. I'm, I'm available personally, May 2nd.
Good, so that's it, so...
Is Mr. Swannaway going to be questioned at some point? Has he completed his testimony just now?
No.
So he's continuing his testimony, so he will be here on the 2nd as well.